All right. Good evening and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education Meeting. I am calling this meeting to order. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'd move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so the agenda is approved. Are there any public -- okay, no public comments. So we will now recess to close session. See you back at 6:00. Thank you. All right, we are reconvening to open session. Welcome to our board meeting. My name is Dot Theodore and I have the honor of being the board president. My pronouns are she and her. We did not take any action in closed session. We didn't, right? No, we did not. All right, mission statement. Trustee Adams, can you please read the mission statement?
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who wish to address the board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comment. After the allotted time, you will be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on issues presented. All right, Canyon Middle School.
We welcome the principal. Yep. Our awesome team from Canyon presenting tonight.
Thank you so much, and I'll ask our Canyon presenters to come on up. All right. So first off, thank you to the Board of Trustees and the entire governance team for inviting Canyon this evening and giving us an opportunity to share some highlights of our Canyon story. I also want to recognize our Canyon community who have come out this evening to support us, student presenters and their families, as well as Canyon staff. So if you want to take a moment, thank our supporters and our team. So our focus tonight is to share some highlights in a few key areas, things that we've been doing for some time now at Canyon, as well as shining a spotlight on what's new and upcoming. It's also very important for us to share individual student stories with you, and so you'll be hearing from some of our student leaders this evening, who in their own voices can really communicate their unique experiences. Joining us in our presentation are our assistant principals, and it's my pleasure to introduce first, Marie Roberts.
Good evening, I'm Marie Roberts, the assistant principal, and it's my honor to welcome Ari Worsley, 7th grade class president, and he's going to share -- I'm sorry, they're going to share a little bit about the middle school experience.
When I started in middle school, it was 2021. We were still getting used to in-person school. I had recently come out as non-binary and was trying out a new name. I was awkward and anxious, so that first year in 6th grade wasn't so good. I wanted to find a way to make this year more exciting. Then I remembered in elementary school, I had fun being on student council, so I decided to run for 7th grade class president, and I won. This year has been much better primarily because of ASB and leadership. I love leadership because I'm one of the people helping to decide activities for Canyon. I like making posters and videos and running Source Store. Leadership feels more relaxed than my other classes, even though we're probably doing more work. In addition, I enjoy the social aspect and getting to meet people with a similar interest as me. I love being part of ASB because I like being involved. I enjoy helping to lead the student council meetings and hearing feedback and ideas from the class representatives. Plus, it looks great on a college application. This year was much better because I got involved in the school. This is why I consider ASB and leadership the highlights of my Canyon story. Thank you.
Thank you, Ari. The Canyon experience includes many things, including Avid site goals. There are three Avid site goals. Organization, which includes binder reminders, using the planner to write not only due dates, but homework and learning goals and topics of study. Handwriting is the second goal. It's balancing online tech skills with handwritten notes, annotations, drawing models, and building skills. And the third one is collaboration. Developing students' sense of teamwork with structures and self-assessment, opportunities to reflect on how they communicate, accomplish shared objectives, and push each other to higher levels of critical thinking. Condor time is used for response of intervention to support various subject areas as needed. And then there's the new 6th grade exploratory offerings. Understanding identity and social justice. This quarter, long class explores theme of culture, identity, and social justice awareness, and digital citizenship. This helps students to understand responsibility and respect while they're online. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Blackman.
Hi, everyone. All right. So it's my pleasure, I'm going to be introducing Kai Rasmussen, our 8th grade class president, who will share another Canyon story with everyone.
Hello. My name is Kai Rasmussen, and my Canyon experience started in 6th grade 2020. That was a special year, wasn't it? It had a lot of difficulties because it was online and virtual, and it was quite difficult to learn just about anything. But -- and then 7th grade came along, and it was also a hard year for me because there's that transition from elementary school to middle school that I was still getting used to because I hadn't learned everything yet about the campus and everything. And yeah, I just wasn't super confident with everything. But by the time 8th grade hit this year, I was a lot more confident in just about everything, and I was opening up. I was trying new things, and I tried a couple new sports that I haven't done before. I did a lot more extracurricular, and I was just also in general happier. And that was because I got a lot more confident because over time, I gained experience and over 7th grade. And yeah, that transition year helped, and this year has been great so far thanks to Canyon. And as I'm wrapping up middle school, I first thought how my time here sucked because of the pandemic, but then I had a second thought, and I thought about how the different perspective changed me and taught me a couple things, like how to join a Google Meet in 30 seconds, but also a few things about myself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kai. So I'm also going to talk about our wellness center. So last year was our first year of our wellness center, and it has grown dramatically. So we are now doing like appointments by request forms there in student services. We are also advising parents through the Condor Call now, like because we're getting that much interest. So with that being said, we have also partnered with Eden Counseling again, and we are going -- or we have already started, our groups are up and going. Some of our groups include self-compassion, anxiety coping skills, middle school transition, that's a new one this year, which is huge, and social skills, and we're doing loss and grief, and we did that last year as well. Okay? So the wellness center is growing. I do want to tell you guys, we have started meditation on Fridays, and kids are coming, even if we have to pull them in. So that's actually really fun. And then we are also starting to store things in that kids need, right? Essential items. So we went and bought extras of everything, women's clothes and men's clothes, and just things to make people feel comfortable. There are beanbeds in there, it's exceptional looking. Okay? So it's turning into a real wellness center. Now, the other thing I want to talk to you guys about is advisory. Advisory is our morning lessons, and it focuses on building skills, goal setting, dealing with challenges, asking for help, effective communication, which is much needed at this level. But one of the things that it's really touching on that's helping us is social media and online safety, as it pours into schools and those kinds of things. And morning advisory is really giving them skills they need to be successful in life. It's giving them that extra push or extra boost that they may need. And we're looking at also, when we look at safety and some of the school-wide community PBAS stuff, we're looking at common language that we're using in advisory. And so I do think morning advisory is really making us a community, and a safe community at that. So both the wellness center and both advisory have been very, very successful. Okay? So I now want to turn that over, the conversation over to Marie again, presentation, to introduce our next speaker.
Here to talk about our organizations and ways to get involved, it's my pleasure to introduce the ASB treasurer, Rainey Rinaldi.
Hi. Sorry. Hi, I'm Rainey Rinaldi, a 7th grader and ASB treasurer at Canyon, and I will talk about student activities. First up is sports. Canyon offers exceptional athletics, from the people on the teams to the hard-working coaches. I personally learned a lot from being on the Canyon soccer, softball, and cross-country team and made many good friendships. It really is an amazing experience. Also, on behalf of not just the athletes but the student body, we are so happy to see green grass on a portion of our fields, and it's not only athletically pleasing to the eye, but it's physically pleasing to the ankles. In addition to the after-school athletics, we also have lunchtime or after-school activities. These include very popular events hosted by PlayCV, such as the DJ volleyball, soccer, and more. Leadership students and web leaders also help run and organize these projects, such as Source Store, Halloween rotation tables, web lunches, and movie nights, and more. They're very fun to participate in, whether it's running them or doing it with friends. These student activities help build Canyon spirit and pride. It's something to look forward to during school and are a big part of our Canyon story. Thank you.
Thank you, Rainey. As Rainey mentioned, organizations and activities on campus help our students get involved and also develop leadership skills, build independence and sense of belonging. We are proud of so many ways that students can join in organizations. Associated Student Body, the ASB student government, the student council, representatives from all advisory classes are on campus. We have athletics, tryout sports, and walk-on teams available for all. Canyon Web, where everybody belongs. Our 6th grade transition program that develops 8th grade mentorship with all our 6th grade webbies. Clubs. We just had a club day to promote a wealth of clubs for students to join and also offer an opportunity to create a new club. CJSF, which is California Junior Scholarship Federation. The organization emphasizes academics and community service. Avid. Our Avid program offers elective classes. It allows students to attend field trips to local colleges and universities and strengthen school-to-home connections through Avid family nights and potluck dinners. Avid is advancement via individual determination. Our music program offers choir, band, orchestra at various levels in addition to our district mariachi program. And we have family groups. They're offered every month to help parents and guardians to be included, connect with one another, and their students, including the PTA, AAAN, Padres Unidos, AAPI, and LGBTQ+ plus. Jennifer?
All right. So here to talk a little bit more about organizations and ways to get involved, it's my pleasure to introduce ASB Vice President Paul Grizzini. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Grizzini. Thank you all so much for giving me this wonderful opportunity to come and speak in front of you all. Back in 6th grade, when we were completely virtual, I had joined a couple of clubs and decided I wanted to start a Minecraft club because it was a fun pastime I had with my friends over the summer before 6th grade. And what really amazed me was how much the club grew and how quickly. We had, at the end of the year, over 30 members, and every day we met, it was just fun, everyone was laughing, people interacting, and it opened this massive, I say massive, I mean 30 people, group of people to me that I still have friendships with and I started friendships with then and I have today. And so it just goes to show how just the community of Canyon can also can be supportive, and they really help you with things, and there are just so many different people that if you feel uncomfortable in one place, you can go to another and they will accept you and bring you in and just have a good time with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul. So I'm here to talk about some of our celebrations or things we do for fun for the kids just in general. So we have soaring Condor of the Quarter, where we obviously recognize students of the Quarter, things that have been, they've done exceptional work either in the class, outside the class, or just overall. We have lunchtime activities, so leadership has started doing more of these. So we do limbo, and everybody tries, even the teachers. And we have a big three-on-three tournament, and the kids love it. Okay? And that's just what the leadership group is doing, these guys back here. We also have something called Powerball Fridays. To celebrate kids that are actually using their planners, we do a big thing about our planners, a binder reminder. It's a big deal. So if you're filling it out, on Fridays, we draw numbers, they come to the front, they show us their binder reminder, and they get a reward of some kind. So that is also something that we've been doing. So new this year, that we've been trying out this month, it's been like the first month, is our PlayCV lunchtime activities. And we have some after-school stuff, but the lunchtime activities, all means all. Anybody can play, it's a lot of fun. We've had a DJ, which was like a dance party. It truly was a dance party. And then we also did volleyball, and we even had some workshops on bike repair because we have a lot of kids into bikes, and that was a big hit. So we're looking, and more to come. I mean, whatever the kids are interested in, we're going to be working and partnering with resources from the community to bring that together. So I'm super excited about that, and we are looking for two dances. So we had one last year. You hear me say dances? So this group behind me, ASB, are going to be putting more dances together and cultural celebrations, right? Because we have all these parent groups and all these clubs, so we're looking for more cultural celebrations. So Black History Month, we want to partner with Full Secondary again and put something together, and the AAPI Month celebration will do that as well. So we have a lot coming up, and they want more. So these guys will be putting together more. But our next person, we are going to speak, I'm going to turn the mic over to Marie to introduce our next person. Or going to you? Oh, actually, we're going to be going to April next. All right.
Okay, so our final topic this evening highlights the continual improvements to our school, bridging the legacy and looking ahead to our future. And so here you can see featured some fun photos from the past on the left side there, highlighting a more antique or looking backward color choice for our school, mustard, you can see what it looked like in the 90s, as well as our 1990s mascot on the left there, just for fun, wanted to throw that in. And then on the right there, you can see our new mascot, as well as some other highlights of our school, as you can see it today. New sod that went in last week, as well as updated classroom furniture, our quad shade structure, and beautiful Progress Pride flag mural. And speaking of modernization upgrades, the biggest aspect physically to our campus has been the upgraded HVAC, the heating and air conditioning in classrooms, in the gym, common areas. Air conditioning has been such a great improvement on hot days, and the consistent heating really makes our learning environment so much more comfortable for students and staff and everyone. Updated lockers in the hallways and locker rooms are much appreciated by students, as well as the staff, who have always helped to unjam those lockers. Improved theater setups in the cafeteria, NPR, as well as D11, our smaller auditorium, give us space to showcase students' talents and promote arts instruction and education. Exterior and interior paint packages, new flooring in the library and wellness center, the staff lounge, and many, many classrooms makes the whole school feel visually cohesive. That's matched with flexible classroom furniture, which includes a combination of seated and standing desks and wobble chairs, as well as outdoor restriping of our basketball courts and parking lot, which have made safer spaces for PE classes and our pickup and drop-off, very famous at Canyon. So coming soon, we will have updated locker rooms, updated office building areas, and new sod on those fields. So we're just looking forward to continuing that upward and onwards progress. So I want to say too that much of these are because of Measure G-supported improvements and also our district-supported upgrades, so I want to say thank you to our facilities and construction teams, as well as maintenance operations, for their ongoing efforts for our very large campus. It looks wonderful, and it's great for kids. So finishing on a Condor pride theme here, we're pleased to welcome two of our newest Condors and ASB officers, 6th grade students who were recently elected at the start of the school year and are in their first year of their Canyon story. So please welcome ASB Secretary Jillian Tong and 6th grade class president Amelia Wong.
Hi, my name is Jillian Tong, and this is my Canyon story. I have only been at Canyon for a few months, and I've been in the neighborhood only since June. I've been to school in Arizona, in Santa Barbara area, and Fremont. When I began school at Canyon, I did really have a friend group. When I applied for ASB, I was doubtful I would get elected, but that wasn't the case because I'm here tonight. I made a lot of friends, and out of the short time I've been here, I've learned so much. One other thing is that unlike my previous, everyone treats me like anyone else, despite my physical disability. I love Canyon at my school. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amelia Wang, and I am the 6th grade president at Canyon Middle School. My Canyon story started just a few months ago. On the first day of 6th grade, I was figuring out how to navigate this immense school. I knew the first few days would be challenging, taking a completely different schedule than my friends from elementary school, and it was. But the great thing about Canyon being so big is that you get to meet many new people from several different schools. From the start of my Canyon story to now, I met many kind people who have become my friends. Later on, I decided to run for a position in student council, knowing I could help Canyon and make a difference. When I found out I won, I was proud and shocked. I knew that I had to give 200% and make everyone remember why they voted for me. Currently, I'm trying to figure out how to fundraise for Condor Time. I love helping the school, and I promised everyone that I would try my best. One of the things I love about Canyon are the art contests in the library. It sparks creativity and encourages students to be artistic, showing off their own style. It's something I look forward to every month. I enjoy seeing all the entries, as well as participating in these contests myself. So my Canyon story started out kind of rough and challenging, but over these months, I have learned that I just needed to find my place in this school, and this year it is on student council. Thank you.
Can we give one more round of applause for our incredible student leaders? Representing our students, why we're here. So that concludes our presentation this evening. Thank you again to everyone who came out to support and our incredible student leaders for sharing their voices and their experience. They make Canyon a truly wonderful place to be.
Thank you for that presentation. After we have a couple of recognitions, we'll bring you back for some questions and comments. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to invite Koby Garcia up here with me. The governance team, along with Canyon Middle School, are proud to honor Koby Garcia. Koby is an 8th grade student who demonstrates Condor excellence through his outstanding academic efforts and commitment to the school community. Koby has been a part of the Avid program, which stands for advancement via individual determination, for the past two years, with motivation, drive, and focus on his college and career goals. He is also a leader of the web program, which stands for where everybody belongs, supporting the 6th grade students' transition to middle school through skill-building and mentorship throughout the year. Koby's energy, enthusiasm, and positive attitude make him an incredibly valuable member of the school community. We are so proud to honor his accomplishments, his contributions to the school, and we know he will continue to soar through high school and beyond. Congratulations, Koby.
Koby, not to put you on the spot, but is there anyone you'd like to introduce or any words you want to say? Thank you.
Now, if I could have the one and only Sarah Dempsey join me on stage. The governance team, along with Canyon Middle School, are proud to honor Sarah Dempsey. Sarah has served in numerous roles over the years. Sarah has served in numerous roles over the years supporting Canyon. She has such a heart for volunteering, connecting and supporting schools and the community. Currently, Sarah is serving as the Canyon PTA president and vice president of the CMS Boosters Club, in addition to serving on the board of the Castro Valley Education Foundation. For many years, she has served in a variety of other official and unofficial roles here at Canyon and also for other schools within our district, dedicating her time, energy, organization and school spirit to ensure that students, families and staff members feel valued, seen and connected. Furthermore, Sarah is committed to inclusion, equity and amplifying voices of those who are historically marginalized and underrepresented, particularly in educational spaces. During the pandemic, at a time when so many felt disconnected, she helped to bring the families and staff together through virtual Canyon community conversations to welcome and connect new families as well as shine a spotlight on and celebrate the positive school culture. Sarah is always asking for more ways she can help, whether that's by showing up, organizing volunteers, managing donation drives, promoting events and opportunities and more. She never hesitates to ask, what can I do? And generally offer her time to accomplish a task or be part of the team. Her care for Canyon goes beyond her own children's experiences and reflects a commitment to the shared community. We are so grateful that Sarah is part of the Canyon family. The governance team joins Canyon Middle School in honoring Sarah Dempsey as an outstanding volunteer. Sarah. Sarah, now I'm going to put you on the spot. Did you want to introduce anyone or say a few words?
I'm here with my Canyon family tonight. Thank you. Those words were quite lovely. Thank you so much. And I love this community, which is why I keep giving back. I think I'm more sad about leaving Canyon than my eighth grader, to be honest. This is my sixth year as a Canyon parent and I absolutely love the experience. There was just no going back. The moment I stepped foot on campus, like that's it, this is home, we're doing this. I love Castro Valley schools and many of you on the board, you know this, I do a lot in the community. Thank you for an abbreviated list here. I do quite a bit and I love it because we as a community are committed to the student wellbeing in the classroom and out. We're committed to their wellness, to creating a sense of belonging and not just for the kids, but for the families. And that's why we're here, right? And we have a long way to go. We're getting better, right? We're getting better, but we're not there yet. So as long as you still need me on this journey, I will keep showing up. So thank you.
All right, Ms. Wong, I'm going to invite you back up for some comments and questions. Quentin, we'll start with you.
I don't have any questions for you, Ms. Wong. I just want to say Canyon, obviously very near and dear to my heart. I went there from sixth to eighth grade. I see some of my teachers out there. Thank you for everything you do and everything you continue to do. And all the students that spoke today, I'm just so inspired and by all that you've done at your school already. It's just incredible, whether it's leadership or WEB like Kobe, whatever you do, you're just, you're using your student voice to better your school community. And that is really, really inspiring and just all of you are so great and we're so excited to have you at the high school. I just want to say we do have a leadership class at the high school in Kobe, a link crew program, which is similar to WEB. So right when you step through those gates, you'll be bombarded with opportunities to get involved. So just be ready for that. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Wong. Thank you for being here. I'm so impressed that, I don't know if many people know this, I hope your students know this, but you went to Canyon and I think you may be our only principal who is the principal of the school that they went to, although I think that's pretty exceptional. I loved how telling individual stories and weaving them together to tell the story of your community is pretty profound. And I want to thank all of our students and Canyon staff who joined us tonight to tell us the story of Canyon. That was really amazing. Kobe, I'm looking forward to seeing you back here in some type of leadership role. And I think you're going to do some great things at the high school. Sarah Dempsey, first, I just need to acknowledge, it's like Cub Scout PAC 703 up in here tonight. I've known many of the, I know the Dempseys through that volunteer work. And as I'm reflecting, Sarah, you're one of the people in my life, I wish I could be more like you. You really model leadership in a way that with such finesse. And it's just such an honor that we get to have you in our community. And I hope we can get back to you. Thank you.
Well, thanks for a great presentation. You know, it's a very complete report. You know, the descriptions by the students were all terrific. They added a lot to it, I have to say. So clearly, there's an awful lot going on up at Canyon. It's a very busy place. So thanks for giving us a little peek at it and look forward to seeing you up there in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you Canyon Middle School. Both of my kids went to Canyon Middle School and they really enjoyed their time there. The Wellness Center, it looks like there's lots of interest there and new programs going in and that's really great to see that you're taking care of even the smaller needs that kids have with clothing and those sorts of things. And the meditation class sounds cool. The advisory lessons seem spot on. It's so good to see those. I want to, what I really think was special about your presentation was bringing students here to talk to us. So I saw six or really seven, but there was Ellie, Kia and Renee and Paul and Julian and Amelia. I hope I didn't forget anybody and of course Kobe as well. And I want to also thank Sarah for all the time that she has, you know, volunteered for our schools and organizations like CV for the foundation as well. Thank you so much, really all of you.
First, I want to thank the kids for coming and sharing their stories. It's really great to see the transformation from pandemic, we're still in it, but the beginnings of the pandemic and how much it affected you all and how much you're thriving now. I love to hear like the different stories that you had and where you got to where you are today and all of your leadership. You're the leadership at the high school and you are creating new opportunities and activities for people to get engaged in more and more. So want to thank you for all of your service to your school and so excited to hear your stories. I also want to say Canyon, my daughter also went to Canyon and even from the time my kid was in Canyon to now, the amount of programs and community, the Wellness Center, it just, you're creating this well-rounded community of welcomeness, right? We're all part of this community and we all belong here and we make sure that, you know, we've got something for everybody. And so that I really appreciate that inclusion and that belonging that you're building at your school. I also just want to note, mention you're teaching conflict resolution. Can we teach that in a lot of different places? Like I would really appreciate that if we have some lessons learned. And then lastly, in more seriousness, you have a dance off and I'm not there? What? Always welcome. All right. Well, I need to know. So thank you.
So many things to talk about, but you know, as you hear the presentation, I, you know, if you didn't know anything about Canyon, you would pick up that it's an absolutely wonderful community. That sense of community that you talked about in everything that the students share, it's that sense of community. And I love, I really love the authentic voice of the students. You were comfortable, you did a beautiful job taking us through what you were sharing with us. You're brave to stand up and speak in public, but that sense of community and one of the students talked about that there's also, there's an opportunity to find a place for everybody. And this whole idea that everyone talks about with the learning gap, which we are all aware of, but something we keep forgetting is that during that time, students learned about themselves, about the world and learned a lot of other things that we probably don't know about. So it wasn't all for nothing. We hated it, we wanted you back and we knew that it was best for you to be in school, but you made the best of whatever you had. I also really want to thank Kobe for all of your work as a student leader, all of the students here. Canyon has an amazing admin staff that you just heard from and staff who's sitting here, just a wonderful team, all there to support kids. So continue to do that good work. That community will go a long way as kids go to high school. And I can see that Quentin is trying to like recruit some of you already, as he'll still be there next year, but thank you so much. And Sarah Dempsey, I don't think this, this recognition was just for Canyon because you have touched almost everything, just about everything in this district. I have worked with Sarah just personally on so many different things and she's absolutely amazing. Everything you said in there is very true and she continues to give regardless of what it is. And if you don't have it on your calendar, she's planning the CBF dinner on May 5th. Be there because it's going to be lots of fun. Thank you so much for all your work.
All right. And I get to say the last words, but everyone has said all the beautiful things about your school and your presentation. So I want to talk to the students and say, thank you so much for coming and being so brave and talking to us. I get nervous every single time I open my mouth in public and you all spoke so eloquently and calmly, like I'm nervous right now. So thank you very much for being here and telling us your stories. Ms. Wong, would you like to introduce any of your staff that are here?
Yes, absolutely. I see Effie Su and Kate Shen, Lucy Souza and
Can you please stand up?
Poonya, please stand up. I think I got everybody. Did I miss anybody? Okay.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. The next item is a presentation by CVCN. And we'll be taking a three minute break in a few minutes after the, after this report and two other reports, so please don't leave.
Well, good evening, board. My name is Naomi Liu. I'm the zero waste supervisor with Castro Valley Sanitary District. And I wanted to first start out by introducing our CVCN Board of Directors. This evening, we have Ralph Johnson and Kristy Dooman-Wortz with us and our general manager, so our staff, general manager Roland Williams and zero waste specialist to Jordan Figurito, who will be presenting with me this evening. First, we wanted to share with you an overview of our award-winning school programs and then we're going to share some recommendations for you for the school district. And so in 2014, CVCN's Board of Directors adopted a resolution to reach zero waste by the year 2029. And two years ago, the board approved CVCN's second edition of our Zero Waste Strategic Plan up on the screen there. Schools are leading the way to zero waste. In January, the state of California began implementing a new law on short-lived climate pollutants, that's a mouthful, called SB 1383. Has anyone heard of that? Okay. It aims to reduce 75% of wasted food and other organic materials going to landfill by the year 2030. And Jordan's going to share about one of the new requirements for all schools and school districts. This year, our theme is composting food scraps in CVCN since 2002. Our focus is bringing greater awareness to students and families so they can participate in food scrap recycling in the green organics cart at home. For over 20 years, CVCN has offered four Rs field trips, that's reduce, reuse, recycle and rot. I'm sure all the students in here know that, to third graders and we've reached over 500 classrooms. For the past nine years, except for that one year in 2021, all Unified School District third grade classes have attended. Students learn about the four Rs, make recycled paper, do the four Rs dance. And the last couple of years, we've actually pivoted so that the classes play a Kahoot sorting game and the presentation is done over Zoom. Mrs. Evans class, which is photographed here, had the highest score last year and her class received reusable Little Miss Reduce bottles. We created an award-winning movie where students learn from CVCN's Zero Waste characters. They are Zero, Little Miss Reduce, Again, Blue and Green, about the importance of the four Rs and where things go in their bins at school. This movie was designed in part by our animation intern, a Castro Valley high school student. She's now a college student working with us on our second movie coming out next year. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Jordan.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. So every year we give refresher assemblies, except for of course, the COVID year. And we've been doing the last couple of years over Zoom, or sorry, over YouTube where we record an assembly. And we've given over 200 assemblies on the four Rs and reducing waste. That's me there in the straw hat. I've been known to drop a couple of bars here or there that are pretty horrible in my voice, but all in the fun of reducing waste. So we get the kids involved with my goofy singing. We have an Earth Day cleanup event that we provide to the community every year, except for the last few, but we're hoping again this year to bring it back. And in 2019, our last full year, we had 11 school district or school district sites and six community sites, working with 600 volunteers to clear litter debris and organic debris, 50 cubic yards of that, and also to add mulch and compost to beautify their landscapes. And the next event will be April 22nd in 2023. Since 2007, we've offered the Green Ribbon Schools Program, which is a comprehensive application that schools put together to show their commitment to reducing waste. They actually have to complete 30 to 40 activities each year that we help them work on throughout the year to get green ribbon certified. And last year, 12 of 14 CV USD schools were certified green ribbon. And over the last 15 years, we've given out now over $300,000 in green ribbon awards to Castro Valley Unified Schools. We have had a custodian recognition event every year since 2012, a decade, okay, since 2012, where we recognize custodians for their support of waste reduction on school campuses and their assistance in helping schools reach green ribbon certification. This is the event that you've all have attended, I think at some point, or a lot of you have attended at Canyon or Creekside or the CFA. And the next one will be in June of 2023. In addition to technical assistance, we also have a donation program for schools for things like signs that can even be customized. I saw our containers back there, thank you for that. Other containers, whatever schools need basically to help them reduce waste in terms of different sizes and shapes and all that. Materials like compost and mulch, like you see there on the screen for landscapes as well, and over 200,000 in donations and grants for things like those materials over the years. We created a student environmental leader scholarship to recognize students for their commitment to environmental leadership and help reducing waste, whether at school or in the community. And since 2014, we've had 11 scholarships now, over 9,500 in scholarships given out. Two students get that each year and the application is due in February. So if you have anyone who's environmentally minded and/or helps to contribute to reducing waste, that's the one for them. CVCN recently won a school programs award from a prestigious industry organization that we go to their events every year. It's called the CRA or California Resource Recovery Association. And this award basically wouldn't be possible without the support of all the schools in our waste reduction programs, which has led to a 70% reduction in garbage since 2005. So that's a really big achievement and we're really proud of it. And really, this award is also CV USD's award too, because without the great partnership we have with you all and your schools and staff and students, this doesn't happen. So we're very appreciative for that. So we're very appreciative for that. And with our programs, oops, that's too far. We're always looking for opportunities and how to continue to reduce waste. Talking with custodians and some staff recently and in recent years, events seem to be one area where we can work to reduce more. As you might not, or as you might know, schools pay for garbage. They don't pay for recycling organic. So the more garbage we reduce, the less you pay overall. And events don't always recycle or compost as well as the schools do. So if there's some sort of way we could get a rental agreement or some contract language with waste reduction in there, that would really help. And I know the custodians would really appreciate it, too. Food donation, as Naomi mentioned, there's a new requirement in S B 1383. Food donation or food recovery is one of the key ones there. So basically, that means that because of that new law, all schools have to start donating extra food that is possible to donate. And if you have the organizations in the area. Right there on the screen is two parents from Chabot Elementary, Nicole and Chelsea. And they donate food from extra school meals each week to the food pantry at First Presbyterian Church behind Trader Joe's. And it's actually a great story because they both grew up, went to Chabot Elementary, and now are helping the school there with the teacher Natalie Howe, who also grew up, went to Chabot Elementary, is helping it there. So a pretty cool story. They have their Chabot Tigers on and everything. So I always like telling that one. And if you would like, we brought some school Zero Waste Services Guides. I'll just give them to Amy if you'd like to pass those around, that just tell you a little bit more about our school programs. And there's our contact information. And we just wanted to say, before I let our board say a few words, I just wanted to say thank you for your continued support of waste production programs at the schools. It's truly a valuable partnership that we have. As I mentioned, so many things that we work on. And as we move forward together as a community toward zero waste, we really believe that students can bring this throughout the schools and bring it home to help the community move toward zero waste as well. So did Ralph, Christie, Roland, would you like to say anything?
Evening. How are you guys doing today?
Thank you, Jordan and Naomi. They do all the work and have done a fabulous job. I just wanted to say, we've been doing this program for almost a quarter of a century now, going back to the 90s. And we just love this partnership for two reasons. One is, you know, we talked about all the money we're giving away, and that's really exciting. And we hope that really helps out, you know, the school district and its budgets and things like that. But more importantly, helping out the kids, get it. Get the four Rs, get the whole program, zero waste. And so the first immediate thing is they get to go back home and tell their parents what to do tonight. And we just love that because that really helps our programs today. But I've been doing this a long time, and it's really fun when I run across now residents that were students a long time ago. This makes me feel really old when they say, I remember when I was in the third grade, and I came to C V San, and I've been doing recycling ever since. And so it's really training the next generation, and we really appreciate that. And we love the partnership we have with the school. So thank you.
Yeah, great presentation. I just wanted to say how important it is that you're teaching them habits that they will have for the rest of their lives. And I can tell you, it's something that we all have to learn. In fact, I think Quentin just caught me yesterday putting something in the wrong bin. And I caught myself. So, but thank you so much. It's really, I've never, and having been in other districts, I've never seen anything like this, and I can't thank you enough. I especially love what you do with the custodians at the end of the year each year. Thank you.
Happy to take any questions that you have this evening as well. And we'll start with you.
Just want to start off by thanking you for a fantastic presentation. I really love how you're making these lessons fun for students to learn about, you know, through your characters and your assemblies. I actually do remember being in third grade, learning, going to this assembly, learning about the different characters. So you're doing good work there. On a broader scale, it is super important that we teach our students these skills because, I mean, you can ask anyone at the high school, climate change is definitely something they're primarily concerned about going into their adult years. And so you're really laying a foundation for that learning and teaching students how they can implement these things into their own lives to overall bring us towards the direction of saving our planet, you know? And so that's really great. One thing that you said, 75% reduction in garbage, fantastic to hear, means what you're doing is working. And one thing I'd like to note, I think you'll be happy that we're actually having a canned food drive that we do every year at the high school, starting next week. So that goes along with your food reduction, you know? So thank you very much, great presentation. Love the work that you're doing, and it really is positively impacting our students. So thank you so much.
I'm just consistently impressed with how C V San tells its story. You're great storytellers for something that, I don't know, it's trash, and it's other things that we won't talk about. But you all do a really good job with that. And I appreciate the engagement that you do have with our community, with our students. And I want to officially apologize for my son, who in third grade went and visited you all. They were actually, Mrs. Perator had to have a talk with them afterwards about the behavior. But it did have a positive impact this year at Creekside in Leadership. He was doing all these presentations in the classrooms about the importance of recycling. So you've had an impact, it took some time. So thank you.
I just want to reiterate how much we think the partnership with C V San to help our kids learn about the impacts to the environment and what the right thing to do is for a better, sustainable society. So I just want to thank you for that. It means a lot. You know, we have one world. And the more we can teach awareness about the impacts to that world and how we can help, I think the better off we'll be. So I really do appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. And I just want to point out that Nicole in the picture at Chabot is my son's godmother, so small world. Thank you. All right, our next item is a student board member report. Quentin, you're on.
So we've had a busy couple of weeks, especially at the high school. I'm going to start with the district updates. I had the chance to attend the Black Minds Matter course this past Saturday with Dr. Ryman and Ms. Eagles. Had a great student discussion breakout group, as well as engaging content for any non-students in attendance. It was a great course, and I believe you can still participate if you'd like. So I definitely recommend to everyone in the room, you go ahead and check that out. The elementary and middle schools are celebrating Halloween with shriekaramas, walkathons, and spirit days around the district. It's a great time to be in elementary school right now. The equity team met last Thursday. Some topics discussed were the progress pride flags, the curriculum advisory team, and communication with educational partners. And schools within the districts and across the state participated in the Great Shakeout last Thursday in all its glory, really, for the first time since the pandemic, which I think everyone had a fun time participating in. In terms of what's happening at the high school, I had a chance to meet with a group of students and staff to decide how to honor Coach Bosnan along with the dedication of Bosnan Field in the Trojan Stadium. This is something that the district and the board has been working on since last February, I believe. And so the grand announcement, out of the four options, we decided on the mural, which has his name under the Trojan symbol on the student-made mural that was painted last year, and a plaque that summarizes what he's done at the high school and what kind of a person he was. And so we're so happy to have that decision and have that up at the high school in the upcoming months. I also met with the Wellness Warriors at the high school. They're a student-led group that provides student input and runs events for the wellness center on campus. And they provided a lot of great ideas, like monthly wellness activities, which kind of mirrors what Canyon was doing with their wellness center, which is fantastic to hear. I also attended C V H S Cabaret, where multiple talented choir students performed for a large group of students, teachers, and community members. There was also homeroom mac and cheese served, which I enjoyed very much. Met with the district Student Leadership Alliance yesterday. And some things we discussed are how to make the four-point grading system more fair for students around the district. This system that was implemented, I think, last year was the first year. And so we just discussed how we can make that better accommodate our students' needs, especially at the high school level. Winter sports tryouts are picking up. Soccer and wrestling tryouts are happening in early November. The high school's fall play, Radium Girls, is coming up. You know, kind of the lead role, and it'd be cool if you all could show up, support. Show dates are the 4th, 5th, 11th, and 12th of November. And in case anyone's wondering, I'm performing the 4th and the 10th. So, you know, if you want to come, be cool. We also have our last home football game of the season this Friday. The women's varsity water polo team are moving to round two of the championships tomorrow versus Berkeley High. We're very, very proud of them. And also, the JV Boys team also won their season championship, which, I mean, water polo always traditionally been a fantastic team, and we're definitely seeing that this year as well. Our Halloween costume at the high school is next Monday. Students can dress up and show off all their creative costumes and potentially win a prize. Our canned food drive, like I mentioned earlier, is starting on Monday, October 31st, and will continue through November 18th. Students can donate cans to their fourth-period class, and the winning class with the most cans wins a pizza party. Pretty sweet. And we also participated in the Great Shakeout last Friday. Something unique to the high school, the medical careers class worked heroically to help injured theater students acting out injuries as part of the simulation for the earthquake drill. And we all had a lot of fun with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Quentin. All right, and now we'll have the superintendent's report, and then after that, we'll have a short recess.
Yeah, so I'll be quick because I know that I'm standing between you and a three-minute break. But, and homework. But I really wanted to spend some time talking about professional development in our school district. This is very important to us. And, you know, I want to share my appreciation with Educational Services, as well as Human Resources, and all of the folks who worked together to put a lot of great things together on October 17th. We had several workshops. One thing that we had, everyone actually, they either took it in August or this time, was compassionate dialogues. And as we're talking today about, you know, creating community and being able to work together, it's been really amazing. Dr. Nancy Dome has written a book, and she actually presented the first time. So lots on compassionate dialogues. Our teachers also spent quite a bit of time in their professional learning communities and cross-grade level and cross-site to work on assessments and collaborate. And they really, if you ask teachers, what else do you need? I guarantee you, and our teachers who are here will tell you, more time to do that kind of work. It was amazing. I loved walking through and listening to all of the conversations. What was really wonderful this time also, it was the first time you could see all of our classified who were participating and certificated together. And that was, you know, we've had classes and sessions before, but this was a major undertaking. So classified members as well had compassionate dialogue, youth mental health first aid. They had some technology training, positive behavior support. Castro Valley High School pair of professionals had their behavior support sessions. So all sorts of great things. Librarians collaborated. And I think if you walked around, like we had the opportunity and the privilege to walk around, you could see that everyone wanted to be there. Everyone's working to do what's best for kids. And I want our students who are sitting here to know how hard their teachers and staff and everybody here works to support you because we absolutely love you and know that we can always do better than we've done. A couple of other things, D S L A, as Quentin said. I love meeting with our team. There are about 20 students that we meet with on a monthly basis. And some of them get to be with us for four years, with me. And some of our team members here, they ask great questions. We ask them for feedback, and I really look forward to those conversations. I visited, actually, with some of our board members, P T As. We were at Jensen Ranch, Chabot, and Castro Valley High School, as well as Stanton. And then last thing, C V E F. I attended C V E F again, May 5th, remember that? Last but not least, I just wanted to thank the Oakland Ballet. That's always really supported us. We had Luna Mexicana here two, three years in a row. And this year is the first year they're back, and they offered us 53 tickets, which we've given out to families and students and staff. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for your report. All right, we will take a three- to five-minute recess. So if you need to leave and go home to do homework, you can do that. But we have exciting things coming up on the agenda. We have information from our Personnel Commission and the reappointment of one of our commissioners. So if you want, you can stay around also. So thank you. We'll come back together at 7:10. We'll move on to, um, the, uh, reports from our bargaining units. Is anyone on the line from CSCA or CVTA? All right. Then are there any requests for, um, comments on non-agendized items? All right, moving on. Consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? No.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, are there any questions? Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the consent agenda is past 5-0. Reports, discussion, and action items. Public hearing. I am opening the public hearing for the reappointment of Personnel Commissioner. Are there any comments? No. I am closing the public hearing. All right. We are going to move on to confirming the nomination of Ms. Toni Wilkerson.
I would like, I would like to move approval, um, uh, to confirm the nomination of Ms. Toni Wilkerson to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction for appointment to the Personnel Commission.
I'll second it.
All right. Are there any questions? All right, Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so we have confirmed Ms. Wilkerson. Yay! All right, um, we will move on to the annual report from the Personnel Commission.
So it's very fortunate that now that Ms. Commissioner Wilkerson is our commissioner, she's going to now present on the Personnel Commission Annual Report as our annual tradition.
Good evening, and I'd like to start by thanking you all for your, um, your vote and support. And, uh, um, I've been, uh, on the commission for quite a long time, and it's something that brings great pleasure to me. I've always been interested, um, way before I even knew anything about the merit system or what it meant and who it, who it made a difference to. And, uh, and then realizing what, uh, the merit system means to classified employees and our students and, and, uh, and the staff, uh, I've just grown a huge appreciation for the merit system. And I'm very happy that our classified employees recognize, um, the merit system and the benefits that it offers to them. So, anyway, thank you again, um, for your vote of confidence. I am going, we have our annual report, that I think you have the entire report, uh, in your packet, and Dustin has repaired, just, uh, prepared a couple of slides, uh, that, uh, for a few things that I could point out to you, um, to bring attention to of, of interest. And, uh, but I wanted to thank the HR office and Jennifer Tapia Smith for, uh, putting our annual report together. She does a lovely job, and we're very proud and happy of her work that she does for us in the, in, uh, the department. And Dustin, and, uh, so, anyway, we're a very happy little family over there in the HR, so, uh, at any rate, and, uh, and with Dr. Zamora added to the, to the group, um, we have a very fine HR office that we should all be very proud of. So, anyway, you can see, uh, just a couple of slides here with the annual report, and, we're just going to highlight, um, uh, mostly the recruitment data. And I'm not sure which, um, does he have? Oh, okay. Ta-da, there we are. Anyway, and of course, you know, Terry Bailey and Chris Low, uh, if, if you're out there somewhere watching this, um, uh, you can wave at them or wave at us. So, anyway, the three of us, um, uh, we make up a really fine group, um, with the Personnel Commission, the three of us. And as you know, um, and for those who don't know, uh, we're each appointed for three years and, um, by the State Superintendent for Public Instruction, and that's because we're a pre-65 district, too. And I'm not sure if everybody realizes the difference for the fact that the classified employees in Casta Valley voted the merit system in prior to 1965, which, uh, the appointment process is completely different than in a post-65 district, where, um, each commissioner, one is appointed by the school board, one is appointed by the union, and the third commissioner is appointed by those two, uh, people, rather than all three commissioners', uh, nomination goes to the, uh, State Superintendent. So that, that's a little bit different. There's only a few states, uh, I'm, excuse me, a few districts in the state that are still pre-65, and, and we're probably one of, like, six. LA Unified, which is one of the hugest districts in, in, for anywhere. An old statistic that I like to still quote, because I find it really interesting, is that LA Unified School District is second only to the armed services in meals served per day. It's huge, huge district, just to kind of give you an idea. I like, you know, I like looking at that, gives you a, a really good idea. Anyway, so the Personnel Commission, um, we have our rules and regulations, and we go over the job descriptions, we have our budget, and, um, we offer an appeals process to, uh, classified employees if there's any disciplinary issues. And, uh, so one of the hallmarks, I think, of the merit system and what it offers, um, to classified employees. So, anyway, if, um, we're going to move along here, um, just to note the amount of work that has increased, um, as you can see, um, on the, uh, recruitment data, um, the number of applicants has increased, but moving over to the number of eligibles that have to be, um, processed, last year 102, this year 248. So a huge increase. And then in appointments have doubled, um, and the number of promotions, which I think is another hallmark of the merit system, is when, uh, we have our folks that perform and are appreciated and promoted. So I think that's a very, uh, these statistics, um, show all the work that has gone on in our HR office, so, um, and, one more slide. So, you know, as I mentioned, our activities, um, that, you know, that we do, um, we've got some new job descriptions that we worked on this year. The Lead Computer Operations Tech, Systems and Network Administrator 1, and Systems and Network Administrator 2. We have our new employee orientation that, um, that is processed through the, um, uh, HR office, Classified Employees Week, and our retirement celebration, things that we really do, enjoy doing, um, every year. And last year's celebration was, um, was a really nice one. It was in a very different venue, if you remember. We were over at the Adobe Center, so, anyway. And then, um, most importantly, noting our Classified Employees of the Year. Terry Braxton, uh, Maria Fisher, Susie Leonardo, one of our HR office folks, and Jane Luke and Manuel Pita. And, uh, and then the county and district winners are Jamesbound from, uh, in the skilled trades. So, anyway, just a few, um, little bit of information to, you know, bring to your attention from our annual report, which, there's a lot more there for you to take a look at. Is there any questions or anything anybody has, or?
Mike?
So I'll just use this as an opportunity to thank you for your service, but also, help me with that technicality. You were talking about the promotions. How's that work? Like, if, if you are a classified employee, um, is that based on a recommendation from a supervisor, and then it comes before the commission? Like, how?
Well, yeah. So it doesn't come before the commission. It's not like we approve, uh, a promotion. Their, um, you know, their job performance, and, uh, when there's a, um, a position that's open, that can be open promotional or closed promotional. So, um, we'll either open it up to, um, our current, um, classified employees within the district and giving them the opportunity to, um, to apply for that, uh, promotion, or it can be an open promotional, which we would then open it up to, you know, to any, any person that wants to make an application and test for that position.
Uh, we, we've been talking a lot about for our students, like, kind of doing standard-based, uh, grading, and with that comes conversations about assessments. And I'm, I'm curious, how does the commission design, uh, assessments for open positions? How does that work? Like, i- if I'm applying for a job, and is, how do you standardize that? How does that, how do we make it fair type of competition?
Well, we do have, um, uh, an organization that we actually belong to that, um, uh, that we get tested for, you know, for testing and, um, uh, to get the correct questions that you want on a test, so that when you're, you're testing someone, you know that they know, you know, that you can test their skill level on the important, um, uh, job, uh, on the important, you know, portions of job skills, knowledge, and abilities. And, uh, so, and then the office works together, our, our HR office works together with, um, with the testing. All of a sudden, I've known them for eons. Dustin, the name of the?
It's called CODESP.
CODESP, yes, CODESP. That was the, uh, it completely slipped my mind. But, uh, anyway, yeah, and they're, they're a statewide organization that, um, that, that's what they do, is prepare test questions for all kinds of positions, and we can just send off to them and say, this is the position, this is the job description, and they, and they help us with not only the, um, uh, the job descriptions, if we want to make changes or create a new one, or the test, um, you know, parts for, and we have other, other way, too, that, you know, the HR office and the folks that prepare a test. So, make sure that we get the right person for the job, um, because it's a lot of work going through, you know, getting people in the job, and then the, um, we want to make sure that they perform well. We don't want to set anybody up for failure.
Yeah, I was just going to add, the performance evaluations are not a part of what the Personnel Commission does. It's our, um, human resources and our process. So if that's, that part is separate from the testing and getting the job.
Yeah, because those aren't, they don't come to the commission for our permission. But, you know, we, we track things and like to know how things are going, and helps us in the future if we need to make decisions on, on a change of a job description.
Gary, and then Dolly.
So Toni, uh, congratulations again on being nominated yet again. You and Terry and Chris do great work, important work for us, and, as I said, my big question for you is, how long have you been on the Personnel Commission?
A very long time. I was just a child, actually. You, you didn't, there was no age limit, so I was just a real child when I came. I was, I've been on for 36 years now.
Pretty incredible. I want to make sure everybody recognizes that you've been on there for a very long time and done a lot of great work for us.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Dolly? I just want to thank you for the work you're doing and for the other commissioners as well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Dolly.
Likewise. Thank you very much for all of your service. Nice to see you tonight.
Thank you very much. And there's, I was going to give a plug, though, because I'm part of the California School Personnel Commissioners Association, that we celebrated last year in Monterey, our 50th, um, annual conference. And, uh, so, it's quite an amazing organization that trains personnel commissioners and personnel directors and staff. I want, uh, if I'm, about between 60 and 65% of all classified employees work in a merit district. And merit districts, you know, individual districts make their choice as to, we have about 100 districts, but there needs to be a certain, um, 2,500 ADA in order to qualify if you wanted to become or vote in a merit system. And so, we represent a lot of the larger districts, which is why only 100 districts and about 65% of classified employees work in, uh, in merit districts. But, uh, anyway, it's been a great privilege, and I appreciate being able to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have update on Measure G prod, uh, projects.
Good evening. Perfect. So I'll just start. I want to show some slides of the Wellness Center plaque dedication, so we have, um, here's a group picture of all of us, and, um, it was a great event to really celebrate the Wellness Center and what it's been doing. Just, yeah, pictures of, yeah, some of, a lot of us were there. And then getting into the construction of things. So Creekside, we're, we're almost done. We're like 99% done. The, the grass is laid, uh, we need to stripe the parking lot, and we need to get the plaque, and, um, and then wait for the grass to root some more. So they just checked on, um, they just mowed, and they're about to do the fertilizer, first fertilizer, and so they're like, it's not quite there yet. We like to give it another month, so we're going to give it another month to let it grow. But it's looking really good. So the pictures here is actually them doing the concrete pour for this drainage, um, ditch or beatage, we call it, um, that's out past the parking lot, along, uh, parallel to Jem. So if you look on kind of past, uh, the, on the left side, and, okay, on the picture on the right, if you look on the left side where the, uh, fence is, that's like a neighbor's fence. And so we're trying to catch all the drainage and move it around so that we don't have pools of water. So they have the big pump, and then the pump, um, the crane that goes up with the hose that pumps it around the trees and into it. So I thought that was a cool little event to capture for you. And then we have the pictures of the fields, our upper and lower field, and our, um, ADA walkway that connects the two. This is our baseball field on the lower field. This picture I want to show, it's a little hard to see, but like, I was trying to also create a connection to Ora Warren Park. So if you look behind the, uh, uh, the baseball field to the right, there's actually a pedestrian gate, and it links to the restroom and the place, uh, structure on the other side, so that if, you know, for community use, when there's a little league game, you know, the little ones can be playing, um, and there's visibility. And Canyon Middle School, we had, we had a week of cranes, which was fun, but, um, logistically, uh, hard to do sometimes. But it was fun to watch. We lifted all the cra- uh, all the HVAC units up onto the roof of the Canyon Gym, um, and, got that all done in the morning. And, um, so, and it is up and running. They are occupying the gym right now. The PE is back, and they're very happy. We're still doing some little touch-up work, um, in and around, and so, um, they are not officially, uh, having the kids address in the locker rooms until, like, after Thanksgiving, so they wanted to kind of ease that back in. And just some pictures of the interior, the wrestling, I think the picture on the left is this. I think picture on the left is just them cleaning. This is the admin building, so they're they're kind of finishing up little things on the gym and they're focusing on the admin building that will pretty much be our last building at Canyon that we're renovating. And so we got rid of them in the front office and principal offices. We got rid of the wood paneling. So kind of got updated the the look a little bit more. On others, we tried, we actually painted over the wood paneling in the rest of the offices and it actually looks pretty good. So very happy with that. And we're redoing the ceilings and HVAC flooring. That we're hoping for them to move back in around winter break. And Marshall, that's why it's another or week of cranes. So we moved the three portables into place. So if you look on the pictures in succession from left to right. So they picked up a portable and then shifted it. So on the picture on the right, it is it's kind of coming down and setting onto the foundation. Yeah, they actually, I was hoping someone would notice. But yeah, the they we moved most of the boxes out, but like some of the furniture, they actually left to the side. And it was a testimony how balance and this the crane driver is, I'm like, wow, that didn't move. So that was that was fun to watch. Okay, so that's the portable, the classrooms, three classrooms set in place. And then we need to, we're working on pouring the walkways and backfilling around it. So we hope to actually be done when by winter break with them. And then Stanton Amphitheater, so just some construction shots of the forms being set up and prepping for the pour. And and then the pour, the trucks came and then they then they pull the forms off within the day and then they start finishing it. So so it's really interesting to watch. And so this will be done also another like around December will be it's close to be done. Pretty much done, we need to backfill around to kind of fix the asphalt around it. We're working on some of the landscaping around it to kind of make it look a little more aesthetically pleasing. And then the shade structure that's behind it closer to the multipurpose room, that's actually being delivered next week and we hope to install that over winter break. And then we have financials. More of the same, we're doing well. So in column A, you know, our total were up to about $111, $111 million in expenditures. We have another 10.2 million in covered. And, you know, our total budget for the whole capital improvement project is 149 million. And we are currently always looking for more funding opportunities. So I think we're doing well. And I'm going to move on. Next few slides is on the energy savings report that wanted to bring to you as part of the project we did with Climate Tech was our vendor. But and part of as we looked at putting HVAC in and, you know, with air conditioning, we also looked at what that would do in terms of our operational costs. And then we added solar. So wanted to report on our savings just in this last 11 months, just looking at the sites we were able to add solar to. We actually produced about 988,000 kilowatt hours. And with the energy cost avoidance is really our savings. So that if we didn't have solar, we the district would have paid this much. It would have been $234,000. So we're able to have that cost savings just in 11 months. And the next graph is more of a graphic illustration of it that the blue line is actual expenditures and the dotted red line is if we didn't have the new solar that was added. And this is also, you know, this is on the electrical utility expenditures. And this was despite of a 24% increase from PG&E from 2021 to 2022. And this is, this chart is actually where that the spreadsheet is where the previous chart grabs its data from. So it's just showing you by site and by month what the production was. And there's a little table I just noticed today for like Proctor on March of March of 2022. It's actually supposed to be 9,720 instead of 720. We missed the nine typo. But the whole, all the numbers add up. We were trying to, my budget asked, actually recreated the spreadsheet from what we got from the vendor because it was pixelating when we were adding it. So he typed it wrong. But it's it's all numbers are right. We fixed it. So then this slide is actually looking at our three sites where we had solar already. Here at the adult school, Canyon and the high school. We part of that project with putting in the new HVAC and new solar. We also went back and retro commissioned our existing solar to make sure they were performing the way we want them to perform. And there is in 2020, it did end up getting a little lower. It's our cost savings was only about 166K. And that was amongst a lot of things with we found as we were retro commissioning, we have found that there were certain panels that were broken, certain inverters that needed to be repaired. And that with COVID, with supply chain, it just took a while to get all the parts in. And so once we got all those repairs done, it, you know, it shows in 2021 and 22 that our our costs gone back up to about 300,000 in savings. So and but overall, our total, we've been able to save $838,000 in this last three years. But and the year is not over yet, so we still have more to come. And that is it. So questions?
That's awesome. Thank you. Questions? And Mike Lavender?
All right. I do have one question, but I'll start off by just expressing how awesome it is seeing the money we've saved using solar panels. It just goes back to that idea that C V San was talking about earlier. You know, moving towards a more climate friendly world and seeing the things that our district is doing is is really great. As a student who, you know, cares about the planet that I'm going to be living in and my peers are going to be living in for the foreseeable future. My question is, you say that you're finishing up with all the Measure G stuff, but what else do you really have to do? Because I saw you have a lot more in the budget. Yeah.
So we have a lot of it's for the high school. So we still have the 700 building. We have the 600 building and we have the softball and baseball play fields to do. And there's a little bit of cost that's like what we call soft cost, like consultant fees that's for the Canyon Fields also. And and then just some little things here and there at the elementary schools as we're finishing up the shade structures and amphitheaters. We still have some interior renovations that we do for the classrooms. A little bit of furniture.
I have a comment with a question and then two other questions. I'm curious with the amphitheaters. Will every elementary school site have one in the end? I just, if you've been on the campuses that have them, it's transformative. They're just a wonderful way of rethinking.
So how we did it was that the the amphitheater was in lieu of a multipurpose room expansion. So for the sites that didn't have one actually in or didn't need one, like CVE actually is multipurpose room is big enough for their campus. And it's pretty flat, so it's hard to put an amphitheater in because usually we build them to the hillside. But we have a interesting idea that we're looking at for it. And similar Shaboo also that were and Shaboo didn't want one also. So those are the two. Jensen, I think, is another one.
It's just great work. It's really wonderful when you when you're at Leipicanoi or Proctor. Just it just changes how your your sense of of how you can use that space. I appreciate people are talking about inflation a lot. And I know that we were lucky during the pandemic, we were able to like speed up some work. I'm just wondering what some what are some cost challenges we're facing right now? Are we seeing labor issues, materials costs?
Seeing a lot of different things. What it's nothing new. It's it's if it's not one in construction, if it's not one thing, it's another. So we just kind of learned to roll with a bunch of stuff. That's how I see it. There's, there's been labor issues. There's supply chain issues there, delivery issues. It's just taking a lot longer to get things done. And that's we've just kind of been more flexible and open with our contractors and and working with them on it that, you know, we see it even in our own staff and in our own work that, you know, if someone gets COVID, they're out for two weeks. So then if the technician or your installer that was supposed to do this calls in sick and has COVID and whole crew's out, then you're delayed two weeks. And what we've been seeing like, we got this from, actually, it was one of the seminars I went to where the electrical union actually have put out that electrical switchgear is like a year out because this small component and this chemical that is produced in Europe that is fireproofing for the wires that goes with the transformers. So and so it's everything's backed up. They're like, no, even more than before. So then it shows actually how interconnected we are that like, you know, you hear sometimes in the news before of like a microchip that is delaying all the new cars. So it's kind of a similar thing in construction, like one little component in paint or the pigment can delay paint and we can somehow not have paint. Or and so we deal with that and we 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 end up just having to wait a little longer. And so and we we work with the contractors to kind of try to pare costs down and we look at where we can have savings.
Well, I just always appreciate since I've been on the board, despite these challenges, how scrappy your team is in terms of finding, looking for the extra penny here and, you know, finding savings and other sources of revenue. So I really appreciate that. I wanted to ask about the solar costs. When you look at the avoided costs, what was the cost to avoid the cost? If you if you know what I mean, what was just if you look at the cost benefit analysis, like overall, if you look at what our investment was in solar, are we seeing was was the benefit greater than the cost, if you will? Does that make sense?
Yes, because we did that initial study actually before we had approved of the project. So I don't have the exact numbers in front of me and Susie's might have something for you.
I don't have the ones for most recent ones that we did at the elementary, but I do, I can tell you back in 2011, when we the the three sites that we that we we did. And we, as you know, it's the we're paying the certificates of participation, COP for for that. But what we are saving is actually when we did the cost analysis, it was an annual savings of between 400 and 500,000 for all three, three of those solo solar panels. And so our our COP payment is is between 150, 200,000. So as you can see, there is still savings of 200.
Thank you. Lavender and then Gary.
I just wanted to reiterate thanks for the way that you've managed and and helped support our district for the Measure G funds. I mean, not only is it, you know, finding innovative ways, but thinking about the environment and sustainability to working with multiple vendors and multiple processes to try to get us stuff before other people get that stuff. It just, we really appreciate it. And I just wanted to thank you again for your continued commitment and to this work. Thank you, Sharon. Gary.
Sorry. Gary was next.
Gary and then Parveen. Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see your hand up. So Gary, Parveen, then Dolly. You are.
Sure. So mine is actually related to Mike's question. And I do remember, as Susie will remember many times, my asking this question before, the cost of the loan to install the panels was, as I remember, 300,000 a year. Have we paid down that or did they get changed?
The $7 million, that was before Measure G. That was many years ago and we're still paying. But the question is, are we done paying the 300,000?
So we still have 10 more years. So we paid 10 years and that's the COP that we refinanced a year and a half ago. So we have 10 more years to go to 2033. And so that caught the annual payment is that 200,000, between 150 to 200,000. No, so those are just the three. This project for the elementary is actually part of the Measure G. So we don't owe. It's we it's part of our Measure G costs. So we didn't get a loan for the solar panels at the elementary. That's the cost was from Measure G because we were going to spend the same amount of money to do, I know that Sharon can explain more, but we were going to spend the same amount of money without the solar panels. And she can talk more about that.
Yeah, so then when we, when we're first initially designing the elementary school sites and looking at the costs, we were, you know, it's coming in hot. And so we were looking at other ways, how do we offset this cost and how do we reduce it? And so we looked to different vendors and we found the vendor that said, okay, well, if you do, we're able to, if you redesign the systems a certain way and then you add the solar, then we can actually work as work it in as a comprehensive energy savings program. And actually, the cost that we would have spent on just the HVAC, we essentially got the HVAC and the solar.
So I want to make sure that I understand this. So what you showed tonight was just the new elementary school program and part of Measure G. But on the ones that are already existing at the three locations, have we paid those off?
Not not yet.
That's what you said, we have another 10 years.
I had three slides. Actually, let me go back. So this slide, the very last slide talks about, oh, sorry.
I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to explain it because it can be complicated. So first, the three places, Adult School, Castro Valley High School. And what was the other one?
And Canyon.
And Canyon. Those three that had the solar panels that we had, we installed, I don't know how many years ago before Measure G, that was $7 million to put them in place so that you can save the cost of energy, right? That that's the money we're paying back from 15, 20 years ago, which you were talking about. So but as a part of Measure G, since we wanted HVAC, the cost of electricity would have skyrocketed. So instead, what they did is they saved a lot of money and moving forward for 20, 30 years of putting in solar panels so we don't have to pay more because we have more electricity that we use because of HVAC. Right?
Okay, yes. So in, thanks for bringing the presentation back up, Amy. So this last slide just talks about what I call like our old solar. So the three sites that's under the COP. As part of what we wanted to do was make sure that all of our systems was running properly. That was part of a preventive maintenance program that that we were doing to check on the the three old solar sites at Canyon, High School and the adult school that was previous to Measure G. So this was just kind of verifying that the system. So this was just kind of verifying that the system did have some maintenance issues and, well, end of life. Because a lot of the parts, not a lot, but some of the parts you have to start replacing at 10 years. The panels still work, but some of the inverters start to reach their warranty period. And so part of what the vendor did was help us reassess them and then work on with the manufacturer to get new parts and install them. And, and so that was part of what this work was. And that's why I was reporting on the three older sites. And then here on the, the other two slides, oh, three, actually, this one that has all the different numbers and costs. And this one, so the $234,000 in savings is in the new solar. So the elementary schools and Creekside that we had put in. So this is savings in addition to the three existing sites we had.
Didn't do this, we would have paid $234,000 more because we have new HVAC.
Yes.
Makes, if, I, I think that, that helps. I just remember a couple of years ago, like some of the solar panels at the high school were really like, that's why they had to retrofit because there was a lot, there were a lot of issues with it. Like, you know, they have a lifespan and kind of like the turf at the, on the fields, 10 years.
That's what that is about.
Right? Yeah.
Okay, right, Parveen, you're next.
No, I just wanted to thank Sharon, Susie, our CBOC because I think there's a lot more information at CBOC meeting and every dollar that we have spent, that's a part of what we want to make sure that we are, you know, following what we promised. But also, if you think about it, 123 million to 149 million and maybe even more because of the grants that you've applied for, that we've received, I think it's been great. And I, I want to give this, the board, when we first started working on Measure G, I want to give them huge kudos for actually doing what doesn't happen in a lot of districts where you get a bond and you only do two, three things and then you're done, was one of the decisions this board made, how many years has it been? Years ago, was to make sure that every single site is impacted. And I love seeing that. And we still have more work that we need to do beyond that. But just anyway, thank you so much for all your hard work.
I just wanted to thank you, Sharon, for all the hard work that you're doing. And I like the, you know, the, the cost savings with the solar panels. This is really good. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is CASP presentation.
And I actually start with a video. And I just noticed Ms. Sax, who's on CBOC, is sitting here, who's been a part of that Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. So thank you as well. So we're going to show you a video that was created by the Association of California School Administrators because as you know, the results were shared, you know, in California. And just this short two and a half minute video, I think says, kind of explains what we should be looking at, what's happening. Before we get started with Dr. Reiman and his team presenting.
The world looks different today, a lot different. How we lived two years ago isn't the same way we live today. One thing remains the same. Our California public school students need support in and out of the classroom. That is why we are reintroducing the California School Dashboard, an online tool designed to assess what we can accomplish for students moving forward. You might say, wait, we've had a California School Dashboard before. Why did we pause it? First, let's talk about why we are here. The California School Dashboard launched five years ago, creating a new online system of reviewing the performance and progress of schools and districts. The dashboard was successful in showing how schools and districts were meeting the needs of California's diverse student population. However, the legislature suspended the statewide dashboard for two years at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic and for good reason. In 2020, the pandemic changed everything we knew about how to educate students and the federal government no longer required the traditional assessments. Year two was a roller coaster that went upside down and never seemed to stop. Chronic absences, an educator shortage, new variants, changing health guidelines and social emotional wellness all had an impact on students. At a time when they needed normalcy, they got chaos. Two years of distance learning and changing school conditions have been part of that chaos. Now we're getting a clearer picture of the puzzle that is student achievement. Generally speaking, California students suffered academically during the pandemic and things can only get better from here. As you review the dashboard and the numbers attached to your school and school district, know that this is the new floor, our new baseline, our new starting point in delivering high quality public education to our students. So what comes next? Your school community is focused on bouncing back from the lows brought on by the pandemic. School leaders have campaigned for support to address the learning gaps that are clear in the dashboard. The governor and state lawmakers listened. They've dedicated a historic amount of funding to assist in creating programs to improve student outcomes. Some of those programs are already up and running with the help from community engagement partners. Proof that the new education dollars won't go unused. It's a new day in California and educators have one goal in sight. Provide the support our students need to get back on track and become our next generation of inventors, organizers, artists, scientists, educators, and leaders.
So the dashboard isn't going to look like the dashboard you're, you're used to. It's those purple bars that we'll talk about.
That's right. And even though typically, you know, a video like that, you know, it's not the most engaging tool necessarily, but it is important to have that background because typically this report would include the dashboard. And one of the pieces that I think that's really important to take away from the video is the fact that we have a new baseline. And so those, the old metrics that we had really wouldn't be usable moving forward, even though for the purposes of this presentation, I'll talk a little bit about our past performance on the CASP leading up to, to now and where things stand now. I won't go through some of these slides. I'll move through very quickly because I know over the past several years, we've talked about the different assessments that make up the CASP, for example. But I did want to include the, these pieces just in case you needed them for reference. But for today, we're really going to be talking first and foremost about the data from the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is our ELA and mathematics portion. There are also these other elements that were referred to in the previous slide. For us, we tested many of our students. It's not every student that's tested. At the high school level, for example, only 11th graders are tested. Other than that, grades three through eight are also tested. And so just jumping right into the data, one thing that I want to remind the board of, if you look, you'll notice that there's a gap year for 2020. Of course, we didn't administer the CASP that year statewide in 2020. In 2021, if you recall, even though we, we are one of the districts that used, used the CASP, the Smarter Balanced Assessment in our schools, we, the participation rate was not a requirement for that year. We were held harmless for participation rates. So our schools pushed really hard to have the highest percentage of students possible participate. We were in the high 80s in most of our elementary schools. We were at lower percentages at some of our secondary schools. We were a little bit concerned, if you remember last year's presentation, that maybe the numbers might not be representative of how students were performing, given that it was possible that it was many of the least engaged students who didn't participate, pulling them out of that data set. So we were a little wary about what that would mean for this year's data. When we looked at the data, we didn't see huge shifts actually in the performance with the changes. This year, we had over 95% participation rate across the board at every school and did meet the required participation rates. So what you'll see is that, oh, before I move forward, actually, one other point. A board member, trustee Howard, and some others have shared some articles that you may have seen floating around in terms of the test results that we're seeing, not just in California, but nationally. They use a different test, NAP, but folks have also looked at other state mandated assessments such as the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And what we're seeing nationally is huge declines in the performance. Some of those declines vary. In California, the declines happen to be less pronounced than in some other states. However, even for a state like California, as we've said before, Castro Valley has performed comparatively well in terms of not having really substantial declines. And we see that here, looking at English language charts, where we're still within the range that we have been. Virtually flat scores when compared to our score before, before the pandemic. However, when we look at mathematics, we see a difference. Where we do see a substantial decline, where we've given away, given back the gains that we've made since 2016, where we're actually one point down from where we were six years ago. This is in tune with what we've seen in the broad, with the broader trends, where mathematics seems to be where students were hit the hardest during the pandemic. So this is a comparison between us and the state average as well as the county average. We typically outperform both of these averages, but it's good to know where we fall in comparison. The, the distance between the state average and the county average this year is, compared to previous years, actually is larger, not a huge swing, but there was an increase, again, showing that, that we actually did comparatively well. We also see that some of the districts around us didn't see, you know, we, we rank roughly where we always have. Alameda is really a twin district to us. Their demographics are almost identical to ours. Their size is very close to ours. We perform very closely in line with them, but other surrounding districts are also included here. This is a comparison of our elementary school, schools. I do want to point out one standout school, Marshall Elementary, actually saw, has seen some increase recently in both its ELA and math scores. And we believe that its elementary avid program and the work that the teachers that are doing at Marshall are really, really to, to credit for this. Again, we see the same thing with Marshall mathematics. At secondary schools, this is a look at the overall ELA and math scores. And this is something that's, that's, I think, more interesting to look at, that we always want to dig in deeper on. And this is a comparison of some of our demographic groups, our ethnic groups breakdown. Even though we did see a decline in the achievement gap, a decrease rather in the achievement gap, that's due more or less to an overall flatlining or decline in ELA scores of our white and Asian students. That's not how we want to show, close the achievement gap. Overall, for our African American students, I do want you to notice a good trend that we've seen since 2017. Again, this is our special program groups. So these are our English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged, students with disabilities. And you'll notice on 2018, we're not sure what caused it, but for students with disabilities, we saw that same spike that seems to be an outlier year. You'll notice something similar with our English learners back in 2016. We think it may have to do with having a relatively small population size and then some students jumping in and out. For example, that 11th grade year, students coming into the fold, coming out of the fold after the eighth grade, grade year, and then having a two-year gap. We're not sure exactly what happened that caused those spikes there. Don't seem to have, for either group, lasted multiple years. But if you look at the trend overall, even though it's, it's a slow growth, we do see steady growth overall in those groups. Again, similar trend in math. However, if you notice, as, as a reminder, our overall scores declined in math, so no surprises. That decline was spread evenly roughly among all of our groups. So we didn't see a decrease in the achievement gap in mathematics as we did in ELA. What we saw was a shared even decline, which says we have work to do overall with math. So this is a look again at our special program groups, our English learners, socioeconomically disadvantaged, students with disabilities again. One really concerning item is that sharp decline that we saw for our students with disabilities. And we know that, for example, in 2021, we had a lower than average, much lower than average participation rate, as I mentioned before. We don't know if that's what showed the increase, where we see that the numbers dip back down to that 18-point trend, which is giving, bringing us back again, all the way back to our 2016, 2017 levels in terms of math. So overall, we did see that some of the performance gaps increased. For example, with our students with disabilities, we saw that with our program groups. However, other performance gaps did decline. For example, with our African American students and Hispanic students in ELA, marginally in some areas. Overall, we know math is an area of concern. There's clearly some work to be done to make sure that the impact of the pandemic doesn't impact our students too heavily in terms of mathematic, in terms of mathematics. And then also, performance is improving overall for economically disadvantaged students. That's a positive trend overall. However, we know that that's also a group that is in need of lots of support moving forward. So looking at what we're doing, we're focusing and supporting specific groups who are underperforming. So that means giving to school sites data on their focus groups so that principals and teachers can look at those specific groups of students and individual students. Luckily, we're not, we don't have massively large schools. So oftentimes, we're talking about a few dozen students within each of those groups, looking more closely there. We believe that the academic and social emotional impact of COVID are interconnected and that we know that some of the students who are performing less well academically, it's an outcome of social emotional needs. And so making sure that we're attuned to that and that students are receiving the social emotional supports they need, analyzing our Common Formative Assessment data, the work that's being done, especially at the elementary level, to align those data so that we're looking at the same data across schools, allows great level teams to look at tier two interventions, what's working at one site, possibly replicate it then at another site. The impact of our EL coordinator, when we talk about the performance of our English learners on these scores, it's not just the CASP. This is one of the assessments we look at. It is by no means the only assessment. Another assessment is, for example, especially for English learners, another piece, data point that we look at is how long it takes for students to transition from being an English learner to being redesignated as fully English proficient. And those students who take a longer period of time are called LTALs, Long-Term English Learner, Long-Term English Learners. Our EL coordinator, Guermina Gutierrez, has been doing an excellent job of really drilling down on that and helping to work, especially with our elementary schools, to look more, look more closely early on at our English learner students' support systems to make sure they're getting the help they need. Our PLC work and our SCL lessons, we know that all of those tier one and tier two supports that we have that are going to all of our students are also helpful. As a reminder, and we'll talk more in December about our significant disproportionality, but we know that, for example, social emotional lessons are a piece of the work when we talk about the social emotional needs of students and the impact more broadly on our students, that those lessons are helpful in making sure that students have the skillset to cope with just the day-to-day stressors that they may encounter in the real world. with just the day-to-day stressors that they may encounter in the real world. And, and doing deeper data analysis, using those data protocols that we've always used, getting back to that within our PLCs and making sure that teachers are identifying students and groups of students who are in need of more academic supports. So we, we know that we've got ongoing work that we're doing right now, especially the work that's happening. David Luongo and Yehoshishy were here earlier, but they've been doing an excellent job of helping to lead the work at elementary and secondary levels for standards-based grading and grading for equity, both at the site level as well as district-wide, working with principals, and then principals working with their teams, re-energizing teacher leaders. The last couple of years have really been spent focused on triage and support throughout the pandemic. So making sure that our systems, our MTSS, our PBIS, all of those different systems that have been in place to support students academically are really being beefed up and sustained and strengthened. Our expanded summer supports, we talked during the summer school presentation about our budget. And so with the help of Suzie Chan, we are working through our budget to make sure that a lot of those supports, including our middle school program, including our elementary program, continue on this year. We know that the academic needs didn't disappear just because we had an expanded program for two years. So we want to not only continue this year, but figure out how we can, can continue those supports for many summers to come. Play CV has also been a tremendous help. So students are receiving academic support after school up until, is it five o'clock, Suzie? Six o'clock each day, where they're getting academic support and enrichment activities each day. We think that's going to be very helpful for students in grades K through six, or TK through six, actually. Ongoing math support through our TOSA, through our PD model lessons, essential standards. We know that math is going to have to be an area of focus. At the secondary level, the math departments have done an exceptional job of leading the way with their CFAs, and have really, also with the grading for equity, have really taken that on. So we should be very proud. And then finally, the continued support of our social workers and elementary mental health counselors. Again, you know, the impact, some students, we really have three different groups of students coming back to in-person instruction. We have some students who seem to have had very minimal impact from COVID, or coming back seem to be thriving and doing well. Some students who we saw there was an impact, once they got back into person, then they're starting to recover and come back academically and socially emotionally. But some students, we're still seeing that there is so serious social emotional impact, serious academic impact, and we think that it may be a long-term effort to make sure that we bring them back in and give them all of the supports that they need so they can be successful. And so that is our presentation on CASP.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Lavender, Dolly, Mike speaks to, I'm glad we have a new system, yay. But it also speaks to, we've been talking about supporting the whole child and supporting kids that need it the most, like being able to look at that in so many different ways and seeing the effects of the social and emotional impacts. I mean, it's clear, right? We, we know this. It's just, it's great to see that we're, we're trying to address it in a lot of different ways and figure out how we can support our kids. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. This is a little sad, seeing those scores go down in math. And I think, I think particularly a little bit with, you know, kids with disabilities. So, I mean, I know my experience is, is that kids with disabilities work better with people. And, you know, so I think this just shows, you know, what happened with the time of COVID, and also need all those social emotional supports and mental health sometimes, and, you know, other things to help them. So it looks like, you know, we have some work to do, but we have systems in place to make this happen.
Dolly, I'm really glad you made that point, because it also speaks to the partnership with parents also. Because while kids were at home, and we're not seeing the impact communicating with parents and doing the work that Kevin is doing to help bring parents into the CAC and PAC to hear their voices, I think is more critical than ever. We have lots of work to do still, but we're, we're making that effort. And so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, that communication is with the PAC and the, the CAC is very good.
Mike?
I have a couple of questions. You know, first, just, yes, I can appreciate particularly math. Math via Zoom was not a fun experience in the Kuziak household, I can say that. And we, we were struggling as a family through that, and we continue to. And I appreciate how our, our teachers are trying to support all students. When we, I, thank you for pointing out where we are doing well, where we are seeing progress. I'm trying to understand, one thing that I appreciate about the culture of our district, and I think of elementary, of, of, of school districts in California, is even if it's not like our problem created by our district or what we're doing, we're going to go in and try to solve it and do something for it. With that being said, is there, when you look at the, the, the different success for, for black students and Latino Hispanic students, is it something about our school district? Or, or, so help me understand that. Like, how do we distinguish between maybe how the system's designed and like, what's in our control?
Well, two things. One thing, when we look at the persistence of the achievement gap, it's important to remember the achievement gap wasn't always a stable function, right? From 1970 till 1988, the achievement gap was closing. And for a variety, variety of programmatic reasons, such as cuts to social services, a reduction in, in the programs that are available, cuts to California's educational system, et cetera, the achievement gap began to expand again. And we've seen it be persistent ever since then. We haven't seen the funding to the programs that helped to narrow the gap return. However, if we take the lessons from the past, then we see that when students are supported, when families are supported, then you do see those gaps closing, even though we don't have the level of funding that I think that would be necessary to really address all of society's factors, right? We are doing, I think, a great job of bringing in as many resources in responding to the communities as effectively as we can. We have a ton of work to do. One good thing about the, this was a big question, so I'm, forgive me if I go on. One good thing about, about a challenge that is as broad and deep as the challenge that we have in front of us is that it's so pervasive that you can work in almost any area and find an area where you need to improve. That means if we're looking at grading, there's lots of work to, to improve on, and we're working on that. If we're looking at our curriculum, there's lots of work to do. If we're looking at communicating with families and making sure that they have a voice, there's work to be done, and we're doing work in those areas. So there's lots of opportunities for us to, to do more. So that's where I think we are as a district. I'm very excited about, for example, Quentin programs like Black Minds Matter, programs like our Padres Unidos program, our PAC and CAC, the work that we're doing for our socioeconomically disadvantaged families, making sure that those families that have a greater need, and those families who have been marginalized are getting the best support that we can provide.
Thanks for bringing up grading. And I was curious, do we see similar outcomes in our grading? Do we do this same type of analysis to kind of see if that gives us an indication of performance?
And so, and can you say more?
Yeah, I'm just, do, does, do grades kind of play out in the same way to sort of show, to show us where, where students are progressing?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say so. Yes, and I think grades are a better indicator in many ways than the CASP, because those grades are aligned to what students are being taught, right? The CASP may not be a perfect match to what's being taught in a classroom. Also with grading, you have an opportunity to address things as the year goes on. So that's where grading for equity comes in, right? So if we take two students, one that comes in and scores a C on their first test, scores a C on the second test, and a C on the third test, that student ends up with a C if they have 70%. Conversely, if a student comes in and scores a zero on their first test, a 50% on their second test, and by the end of the year, they get 100% on a cumulative test, so they've mastered everything, they've learned the most, that student would get an F, right? Because that's a 50% average. So we've got some work to do on our grading practices, so that students who are negatively impacted have an opportunity to grow, rather than penalizing growth, rewarding growth. And so that's what a lot of the work is. So yes, I think that grading is a better indicator, and I think there are more opportunities for, for us to address learning loss, for us to address inequities through having a more equitable grading system.
And connected to that, and this is my last question. I'm grateful to be a parent now than maybe like a decade ago, when it was all about no child left behind and just sort of the kind of overemphasis of, of testing. How, how as a parent, should I think about this assessment? Is it sort of a temperature check? Should I, on an individual level, should I be concerned what I might see for my own child? Or is it, what's the role of, of these types of assessments going forward? Are we in a better equilibrium?
I, I think if, if you're asking what, how parents should look at this, I can answer as a parent of a student who takes, right? I think it is important to know how your student is performing in comparison to the broader state data, right? That doesn't mean that it's a perfect score. The grades are just like we use as a school system. I would say as a parent, I would want to know, well, how does my student stack up when in comparison to other students around the state, right? You know, just because my student's getting As, maybe my student's in a school district or classroom where grades are inflated. We don't work in a district like that. However, I would want to have that kind of data, where it's kind of normed against the state averages. The CASP is no, by no means a perfect indicator of that. There are many flaws to it, but it does give you some indication of if your child is where they should be academically, according to what the state, and actually, it's normed to some degree on national norms, because these assessments are actually mandated by the federal government. That's why we give them in California. So it does give you some indication as a parent of where your student is.
And I appreciate all the thought that you put into this, one, just answering my questions, but two, clearly, if you look through the presentation and listening tonight, this district really is looking at a lot of ways to support students and getting us in the right direction. So I, I thank you for all the work and how it's informed through, through our, our equity lens. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I just, I, I think when I look at assessment, this is like, we all love data
and, and look at data in so many different ways. I think one, one thing we've done in the last few years is use a protocol that's consistent called Notice Wonder, and, and I think we use that a lot of time, that actually Ms. Rishichi really brought to us. You know, when I think about the CASP, when you were asking, it's a summative assessment, it's one test. It's not all the formative assessments that our teachers give throughout the year, to me, is what you really need, we need to focus on. The other piece is, I mean, you've heard this, if, if you're assessing students with these kinds of tests, and especially during COVID and after it, you're assessing privilege. Let's just face it. The demographics show you, and you can look nationally, not just now, but historically, that's what happens. And that's why really in a lot of countries, let's say in, you know, in Europe, kids don't even take these kinds of tests until they're much, much later, and it's not, it doesn't have the same, it, it's just not the same. So when I think about grades that our teachers are giving, I would say there have been, as teachers, we all noticed, there were kids who were really understood the standards, got it, but the test didn't match what they were learning. So my question for all of these summative assessment is, are we actually measuring the right things, and are we measuring them the right way? Because a lot of it has to do with how many times you've practiced. We've all been in places and in situations where students, even for an assessment that was supposed to be, like identify you for certain things, that they practiced and they did better. So does that really say that you know the standards and know what to do? So, and that's why I'm really pleased with what we are doing around grading, standards-based grading. And I was really happy to hear from the students yesterday when we met, that at least three, almost every student raised their hand when we asked, are there at least three of your classes where you're doing retakes and redos? And it's, those are the kinds of things that our teachers are doing to help see if the students know and are able to do something. And then there are things that really don't have anything to do with your grade. We always talk about that. You know, if, for example, if you're giving credit or taking points away because someone went to the bathroom, how does that impact how much math they know or what, what standard they do, they know? And that's why this is really the right focus to have. I also think that when we talk about the achievement gap and our students of color underperforming, that word means that they have the potential, we just have to do more to serve them. And I think the beginning of it is identifying and building those relationships with the kids, having curriculum that is historically and culturally relevant and responsive, and our pedagogy needs to match that. And that's why the diversity of our staff is really important. So there's just a whole lot, and I think we do need to pay attention to something that's summative, but we have to look at it as one part of what we need to look at.
Thank you for that presentation. All right, we will move on to item F.
I move that we adopt resolution 19 dash 22, 23.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, are there any questions? Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, that the resolution is adopted 5-0. Item G.
I move that we adopt resolution 20, 22, 23.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is also yes, so the resolution is adopted 5-0. Item H.
I move that we adopt resolution 21, 22 dash 23.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, the resolution is adopted 5-0. Personnel report.
I move that we adopt the personnel report.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so the personnel report is adopted. Board member comments and reports. Quentin, do you have anything to add to your earlier report?
Nope.
All right, Mike?
No updates. I'm looking forward to visiting Castro Valley High School on Friday morning.
Awesome. Gary?
Visited the, with Parveen, the Stanton and Castro Valley High School parent clubs in the last couple of weeks. Today, Lavender and I were involved in the hard ad hoc committee negotiations. Yesterday, it seems like to. And today, with Dolly, I sat in on the Special Ed Parents, the PAC Advisory Committee. And finally, yes, I better figure this out, yesterday, I think, we had a really excellent presentation at Rotary by Blaine Torpey on the Eden Area ROP, where he's now superintendent. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly.
Yes. So as said, I was at the SPED Parent Advisory Committee meeting, went to the Equity Team meeting, it's the new name now, Equity Team. And, let's see, I went to Memorial for Margaret Kidd, who used to be the Director of Special Services and who had hired me in the district back in 1999. She was She was, she was a powerhouse in in CVUSD. And it was really great to see all the people that remembered Margaret and were, you know, affected in a good, positive way by the great work that she did for the Special Services Department. And I was at the meeting with Gary, right, for, and saw Blaine Torpey, and he gave a presentation on ROP, which I always want to support. And my last thing is, is I would just like to encourage everybody to go out and vote November 8. Please remember the local races, try to, you know, vote all the way down the ballot.
I went with Parveen. I was remote, but I was lucky enough to go to the Benoy PTA meeting. It was really nice to hear from them. And then I was with Gary, as you mentioned, at the hard CVUSD ad hoc committee.
I have not represented the board since our last meeting, but I did run into Quentin at the cabaret last week and that was a lot of fun. That's it, meeting adjourned.